Is there anybody here who wants to speak to us before we have called meeting to order? About an item that is on the agenda? Seeing none, now I'll call the meeting to order. Need a real call of attendance, please?
Done.
An approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda and I do want to comment that we are accepting donations of almost fifteen thousand dollars from members of our community to be used for our schools and our students. And we thank everybody who's done that very much.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There are no presentations tonight, but we do have a new student. Luke is joining us for the year as our student rep. And he, every, every school board meeting will give us a report on what's going on from our students' perspective. And I will ask Luke to introduce himself to the camera and to the group in the audience.
Hi guys, my name is Luke Wisneski. I'm a 10th grader at Monomidi High School. My favorite subject is math. My favorite color is orange. My favorite movie is Fargo nineteen ninety-six. Not much else. I, I'm ready and excited to participate in this school board. And I'm just, just pumped and full of energy to be here as a student rep. That's about it.
We're glad to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the minutes from August ninth and August twenty-third.
Do you have a report?
Oh, goodness, yeah.
The one tonight?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I thought you were just introducing.
No, I, no, I do. Thank you for reminding me. Right, current events at the high school. Upcoming, just tomorrow night, Friday, is the Pinkout Tackle Cancer Game. In past years, it has honored those who've been affected by breast cancer, which is most commonly associated with the color pink. However, this year, in an effort to represent other cancers, because of course breast cancer is not the only cancer, we have initiated several spirit days at the high school. For example, today, I wore blue to call attention to colon cancer, which is in the top five of the most deadly cancers. Donations from students have been collected all throughout the week and will continue to be collected at the football game. You probably see me yelling at you to donate money. All money goes to the Randy Schaefer Cancer Foundation, which directs the donations directly to cancer research and nowhere else. So, just to sum things up, come to the football game, support the local high school football team, and donate to cancer research. Also coming up to the high school is the homecoming football game and the subsequent dance for which a majority of students are anticipating. Finally, an assortment of fall sports have also begun, some of which include boys and girls soccer, girls tennis, volleyball, and football. That's all I've got about for this meeting, but plenty more to come next meeting, so.
We're looking forward to it.
There's, there's my rundown, there's my report.
Thank you.
Just, just want to add on to your report. I was watching the cast by the car wash.
Oh!
That happened Saturday.
That's true.
And the level of engagement and the nice car washing that was done was awesome. And that's an annual thing and it raises money again.
Oh yeah. So again, the Student Leadership Council was out last Saturday, Saturday morning, we raised about thirteen hundred dollars if you round up. Yeah, that was a blast. That was, yeah. So again, all raising money, all these proceeds go directly to cancer research, so.
Alright, thank you.
That's what's happening in the schools.
All good. Anybody else? We do need a motion to approve those minutes, August ninth and August twenty-third.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do have a few discussion items, calendar of events. Call anything out? Kevin?
So, I believe in my Apple phone, it tells me we have the EEA meeting on Monday the seventeenth. And Laura, I stand corrected if I'm wrong. Okay, so that would be the one add-in I'd put in. So that's the partnership we have, equity partnership we have with Northside, Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale.
Okay. Anybody else? Levy update, Bill.
Thank you for the opportunity to present a levy update tonight. In your board packet and on the screen, you'll see a levy update, this time focusing on voting information for September thirteenth tonight. So, tonight's presentation will focus on early voting via absentee ballot. So in our continued effort to inform the voters, this early absentee voting is becoming more popular, so we thought we would take some time to look into further details on that process tonight. So we'll go through an overview of the process and then look at some key dates along the way as well. And a lot of this is fairly prescribed, so forgive me if I'm sort of reading from the presentation here, but I want to make sure I get the words right in the correct order, so that's really the reason for that. So the first page, the election as we all know is on November sixth, and the technical name for early absentee voting is voters can do early voting via absentee ballot. So the early voting via absentee ballot, either in person or by mail, and we'll go over each process here. So looking at some headlines from the primaries. So we all remember the primary from August fourteenth. So you can see that more than nine hundred Minnesotans voted in the primary, which represents almost twenty-three percent, twenty-two point seven percent of registered voters. So if we're using the primary as a benchmark, we're expecting certainly a high voter turnout in November. We do have approximately ninety-five hundred registered voters in our school district, and I, I would not think that an eighty-five percent voter turnout is unreasonable. And so, as we all know, there are two senators, a representative, a governor, a state auditor, and attorney general, all on the ballot, so we're expecting an extremely high voter turnout in November. So looking as to some statistics on early voting in Minnesota and really the increase in popularity, as I talked about at the, at the initial here. So on your left, you'll see, just focusing on Washington County, which is obviously the county that we're in. In two thousand and sixteen, there were one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven ballots sent out from their office, and increased in two thousand and eighteen up to three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two ballots sent out from their office. An increase of a hundred and sixty-nine percent. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the total ballots received. So in, in two thousand and sixteen, received four hundred and fifty-six, all the way up to twenty-six hundred and seventy-two for the primaries this year, an increase of almost five hundred percent. So clearly, this is something that's becoming more popular, this absentee voting, or early voting via absentee ballot. And so it makes sense to look into the specifics on exactly how, how it works. So before looking at the how, let's identify the what. So, in Minnesota, you can vote early via absentee ballot, starting forty-six days before the election. So, in our case, that would be September twenty-first, so a week from tomorrow is when early voting via absentee ballot opens up. Also called no excuses absentee ballot, absentee voting, so you don't need a reason to request an absentee ballot. In other words, you don't need to be out of town, you don't need to be overseas, you can request early voting via absentee ballot for any reason is why it's called no excuses. So you can request a ballot at any time, and then ballots are starting, or ballots will be available starting after next Friday, September twenty-first. So how? How to vote via absentee ballot? So I'm gonna really go through the process here and show just how easy it is to vote, to register and vote via absentee ballot. So in order to do that, I'm gonna go to the Secretary of State's website, which is that link there. So if you go on the Secretary of State's website, it gives you an option to vote early absentee. In this case, let's, let's click vote early via mail. You can either do vote early by mail, vote early in person, vote for military or abroad, and then track your absentee ballot. So if we just wanted to pick one, vote early by mail, click on that, and then read the instructions, and then go to the online application. Select the county. In our case, Washington County. If we select Monomidi, and where we're sitting right now, and then obviously the November sixth, the general election. It'll take us to tab two of two, where I enter all of my personal information, which I prefer not to do on television, but this is step two of two. So you can see just how easy it is to, to go on and request that a ballot be sent to you. And so just wanted to show just how simple that process was. So you can either go on and request that, or you can go in person. So you can pick up an absentee ballot in person, starting on September twenty-first, a week from tomorrow, at the Cottage Grove Service Center, the Headwater Service Center in Forest Lake, the Washington County Government Center, the Woodbury Service Center, and the Oakdale So some instructions on vote early via absentee ballot by mail. So these are fairly prescribed and important, so I'd like to go through them one by one if I could. So step one is you apply for a ballot anytime during the year at MNvotes.org, which is the process we just, we just went through. Election officials will send out ballots once they're available, in our case, starting on the twenty-first. Obviously, read the instructions that come with your ballot carefully. Step three, you will need a witness when you vote and complete your ballot. The witness can either be a registered Minnesota voter or a notary. So that's a question that we get fairly often. If you're, if you're voting absentee ballot and you live in Monomidi or Delwood or Grant, you would just need a registered voter to sign your envelope. But if you're away at college, let's say at Iowa or Wisconsin or wherever the case may be, you would just need another Minnesota voter or a notary. And a lot of times there, you can find notaries in the registrar's office. So that's an important thing to remember. If you are not registered to vote, you can also go through the registration application in your materials. And to register, you'd need to show your witness, one of your identification options listed in the instructions, and then your witness must mark which ID you showed them on your signature envelope. And then after you finish, mail the ballot in forms back right away. Obviously, if you send your ballot back after election day, it will not count. It has to be received by November fifth. And you can also return in person at the election office that we discussed on the previous So I covered this a little bit already, but just wanted to show again the, the locations. Obviously, you don't have to live near one of the locations, we wouldn't, being a Monomidi School District taxpayer, but you can see the locations there. The Cottage Grove Service Center in Cottage Grove, obviously, the Headwater Service Center in Forest Lake, Washington County Government Center in Stillwater, Woodbury Service Center obviously in Woodbury, and then the Oakdale City Hall as well. So and then ours for the locations to drop off your ballot. On election day, on November sixth, we, we have nine polls, and you can visit that link to find your polling place. And you can see our polling locations for the Monomidi School District, in, in our location is the Monomidi District Education Center, St. Andrews Lutheran Church, Willarney City Hall, OH Anderson Elementary School, Lutheran Church of the Risen Christ, Lake Elmo City Hall, Silver Lake Methodist, Gulfview Elementary School, and Rice Lake Center. Nine polling locations in total. And then just to wrap up, we do have upcoming community meetings to discuss the levy, starting at the end of this month at OH Anderson. So it's obviously important to reach people where they are and the locations that they are. So we're having this meeting here in the District Education Center, but if you're a parent of a second grader or a parent of a tenth grader, your connection to the school district may very well be at Wildwood or the high school in those situations. And so you, you may be more apt to come to a meeting to hear about a levy in the building. And so you can see we have a, a meeting at OH Anderson starting the end of September. We do have a meeting at the District Education Center during the day, for those that cannot attend a meeting in the evening. October eighth, we will be at the Middle School Media Center at six-thirty. The next Monday, we'll be at Wildwood and the Media Center, and then finally at, at the high school. So Monday is there in October. And we just encourage community members to attend to find out more information on the upcoming levy. Questions at all on early voting via absentee ballot?
So Bill, just to echo how, just how easy it is to do. I was having coffee, and I spent five minutes on my phone, and I know too much screen time, but five minutes on my phone, and I had ordered the ballot. So it should hopefully come to my house on the twenty-first or thereabouts. So very easy to do.
So, a lot of these kids at college have not voted. So how can they tell if they're registered? If they didn't vote in the most recent primary and if they didn't sign up online, is there a way to tell if they're a registered voter, if they're having a friend of theirs, you know what I'm saying, that's with them from Minnesota to vouch for them? Is there a way to tell if you're a registered voter online? Do you know? I can't remember.
Here's what I, and I want to make sure I address your question. This is what I do know, is that if you are not registered to vote, you'll get registration application in your materials. So if you request an absentee ballot and you're not a registered voter, you will get registration information that comes with your absentee ballot.
Sure. So, but I was talking about the person who's vouching for your identity when, when they signed. So if you're not sure if your friend is a registered, because they have to be their registered Minnesota voter or, or a notary, so. They, I would imagine if they haven't registered online...
It looks like Alice may have it. Alice, you have an answer for that?
Do you want to come up and? Hi, thank you. You can go to the Secretary of State's webpage. And when you go to the registered to vote section, there's a place where you can check your registration, so that person that's vouching for that absentee ballot could check their registration there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that right away. Or the kids can get a notary to do it. Alright, anything else? Alright, you're still up, Bill.
We do have a video. I forgot to go over this here, I didn't get to the end of the presentation, on early voting information, which basically just goes over the information I did with a lot So it's a thirty-second video that loops twice. And just helpful information, on the bottom, you can see the MNvotes.org link, and we will be putting that out on social media, and it is on our website, or will be on our website. It's on our website with more information on early voting via absentee ballot. Go ahead with the next agenda item. Okay. So included in your packet and up on your screen is the two thousand and eighteen pay nineteen preliminary tax levy. And so obviously, we're having a lot of the conversation about our upcoming levy in November. The world still goes on outside of the operating levy, and similar to prior years, we're having conversations in September about the preliminary levy for the upcoming year. And so, as I do every year, I would just like to start by defining exactly what we're doing here with the two thousand and eighteen pay nineteen levy. So this is certainly cumbersome, but this really spans three different fiscal years. So we're talking about the eighteen pay nineteen levy, which uses school district data from two thousand and eighteen. That will be taxes payable to our taxpayers in calendar two thousand and nineteen, so next calendar year, and then finally, school district revenue in two thousand and nineteen, twenty. So the column that we're looking at here, the proposed levy payable for two thousand and nineteen, that's really the first step in budgeting for next year. So that will be district revenue on the levy side for two thousand and nineteen, twenty. And even more important this year, with what we have coming up in November, if the levy does pass, this number will be changed from the preliminary levy to the final levy at the truth in taxation presentation. So what I'd like to do here is just go over an overview of the next several meetings, just to provide some clarity on what to expect on the finance side, and then go over what's on your screen as well. So here we are tonight, September thirteenth, talking about the levy overview as just a discussion item. The next meeting on September twenty-seventh, you will see the same document, or something very similar if there's an update from MDE, and a recommendation to certify the preliminary levy. Now you remember from the prior years, we don't certify a preliminary levy, or we don't make a recommendation to certify the preliminary levy as a certain dollar amount, rather we make a certification, or a recommendation to certify a preliminary levy as the maximum. Alright? So that gives the school board flexibility if there are adjustments that come through from the Department of Education, or in our case, the upcoming operating levy. So that's why we recommend certifying the maximum, and then leaving that amount open until the truth in taxation presentation in December. Most years, it doesn't, doesn't change very much, if at all, but it's just a good practice to do that. Again, it's on September twenty-seventh, the, the Finance Committee will be looking at a fiscal outlook, and then we'll also be looking at preliminary audit results for last fiscal year, seventeen eighteen. So it's really a time of the year where we're working in three different fiscal years. We have the audit coming up next week, and the Finance Committee will discuss preliminary results at the, at the Finance Committee meeting before the next one. October twenty-fifth, we'll see a quarter one budget update and fiscal outlook with the all-important October first enrollment count. So I know people have been wondering what our, what our enrollment is to start the year. We are anxiously awaiting that October first enrollment count, and we will present that at the study session on October twenty-fifth. We're tentatively scheduled on November fifteenth to have school board action on the seventeen eighteen financial audit, so that's based on availability with MMKR, our CPA firm that's scheduled to come in and do an independent audit next week. And then finally, on December thirteenth, we'll have the two thousand and eighteen nineteen truth in taxation hearing during the regular board meeting on, on December thirteenth, where we will certify the final taxes payable number four next year. So with all of that, we will go over this spreadsheet up on the screen. I'm gonna start with the end in mind and say that the overall change between the general fund, the community service fund, the debt service fund, and the OPEB debt service fund is exactly one percent, which is really hard to do when you're talking about thirteen and a half million dollars. But the, the increase year over year is one percent. A lot of the changes are very, very small, so I'd just like to go through and highlight some of the larger changes and really what that, what that relates to. And if you would like, on the bottom of the sheet, you do have line numbers that correspond to explanations. So obviously, line one, if we go up above, our referendum, the three point six four one million, ties down below, operating referendum renewed in November two thousand and fourteen, a ten-year referendum with a voter-approved authority of seven hundred and forty-four dollars plus three hundred under school board control for referendum authority of a thousand and forty-four. That's how we get to that number. Okay? And so looking at local optional revenue, local optional as appropriated by the legislature is four hundred and twenty-four dollars multiplied by our adjusted pupil units, that's the acronym APU, which in our case is three thousand six hundred and twenty-one, which is simply taking our student count and applying a weighting factor to, to that student count. Going on down the line here, you can see our operating capital increased slightly, as well as our alternative teacher compensation, our Q comp revenue. And down below here, you can see our operating capital is part levy, in our case about twenty-eight percent levy, and part state aid, seventy-two percent state aid. Same with Q comp. So we're about thirty-five percent levy on the Q comp side, and about sixty-five percent aid. Not wanting to go over all of these, reemployment insurance is tied to our levels of unemployment payments, and you can see the good news on our side is that our unemployment payments have gone down, therefore the reemployment insurance levy amount has gone down as well. Our capital projects levy, so our, our capital projects levy is scheduled to go up forty thousand dollars year over year. And as you'll recall, our capital projects levy, which was renewed in two thousand and eleven and expires in two thousand and twenty-one, I do believe I have it down here, is based on the net tax capacity. So the net tax capacity in our taxing district increased to twenty-four point seven two million, and that's multiplied by a factor of two point seven three percent. So our NTC in our taxing district increased to one point five million since last year. So that's, that's certainly a good sign for our community and the net tax capacity, and certainly a good sign for our capital projects levy and a lot of the important technology tools that we, that we purchase under that categorical funding. Long-term facilities maintenance, you can see, is a three-year statutory increase, and this is a year reference there. OPEB, we do not have a levy for OPEB, and so that's the cause for the decrease there, because we have a trust, and so we can't, we're not able to levy for that. Building lease levies stayed, stayed very similar, so that's also, that's our lease levy for our school district, and then also nine sixteen, intermediate nine sixteen. So you can see the limit for lease levy is two hundred and twelve dollars multiplied by the adjusted pupil unit. So it's important to note that the limit on the eighteen pay nineteen levy for lease is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So we are levying three hundred and fifty thousand, so we're significantly below the allowable lease levy authority. Important to know that as a, as a conservative approach for our taxpayers. Where the total, the total levy in the general fund, year over year, is scheduled to go up sixty-nine thousand. Community education, scheduled to go up thirty-three thousand. Debt service levy, scheduled to go up thirty-one, and the OPEB debt service up slightly at sixteen hundred. So again, at the end of September here on the twenty-seventh, you will receive a very similar document and a recommendation from administration to certify the max levy for two thousand and eighteen pay two thousand and nineteen.
Anybody? Questions or comments on? Just gonna come back to us again, so. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you.
We have one action item tonight, and that is approval of our eighteen nineteen superintendent and school board's goals.
And there isn't much of a difference?
There was one update that you had asked for on the, on the school board goals, and that had to do with the MSBA, am I right? I'm looking to you, I think it was the...
I'm trying to remember what we asked.
It was the, the, right, your, when you get together to... The review, discuss, and potentially submit resolutions to the delegate assembly.
The delegate assembly.
Right. So that was the one change, there was, you wanted more specificity in that area. And so other than that, the, in both cases, the, the goals stayed the same.
Anybody have further discussion?
So, we use the format we've used the past couple of years, which is very helpful, because it allows us to see the large goal and some of the details. And I like the way you've added, you know, the meetings and, you know, who's involved and those kinds of things. The other thing that we've done in the past, we, we sort of monitor these through another column at the very end, that would be green or yellow sort of check-in mid-year, will we do a mid-year check-in on these and sort of see where we are to see if we need to readjust goals at mid-year? Because you make great plans in September. And then, you know, by the time we get to January, you might need to rethink or add goals or subtract goals. And so will we have that opportunity at mid-year to do that revisitation of the goals and sort of check in and monitor how we're doing?
We do have the retreat scheduled for January, and that might be a natural time to have that conversation.
I think so.
Well, as we've typically done in mid-year evaluation in December. So if we...
January will be close enough.
Anything else? Need a motion to approve this? So moved. Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any reports? AMSD?
Yeah, we had a, there was an AMSD board meeting last Friday, and then there was one August tenth, too, that I never reported on, but we had William Morris and Morris Leatherman came in and gave a presentation Barb and Alice had attended, and I made a copy, I asked Laurie to print off a copy, because it was a very interesting presentation. I wish it had everything he said on it, too, to really make a lot more context into everything, but it was talking about, you know, just all the questions that they ask every year, and they presented to, to the AMSD, and all this stuff is on the AMSD. and they presented to the AMSD, and all this stuff is on the amsd.org website, and I think you might get copies sent to you, or the emails, but it's very interesting to look at what people think about things, countrywide, you know, busing for equity, parent trigger law, achievement law, and just kind of going through it, it was very, he did a great job explaining it, and I, for the life of me, I couldn't even write it down fast enough. But I have it here if anybody wants to look at it, and if Barb would like to add, or Alice, but it was a really cool presentation about how, you know, he kind of makes predictions about what's, are we going to turn bluer, or redder, and a lot of that stuff kind of comes out in this.
He's an interesting guy.
He is, he is a very interesting guy. But, so, I just found this to be very interesting, and if you guys wanted to take a look at it tonight, you can, otherwise, it's on the website, you can just look at it on your computer. And also, we got this, and this was made, Alice prepared this before leaving, and we had a few copies of these, and this is a good guide for us to, for a campaign manual, campaign finance, no wait, that wasn't it, this wasn't it, that was the questionnaire, where'd that go? Sorry, I got the wrong one. Do you have that?
I do have copies in my office, if you'd like a copy, but it's also on the AMSD website. Yep, and it's, it gives you some questions and talking points for what kinds of things you might want to be talking about with your legislators around supporting schools, so it is, it's a good document, and I do have, I do have a few copies, but again, it's available on the AMSD website.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
And then on August 10th, we had, there was another AMSD Board of Directors meeting that Barb and Lucy were at as well, and a couple of attorneys, Paula Forbes and Nell Matthews, gave a presentation, a sort of update on the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit, and as it is progressing through the court system, and that PowerPoint is also on the amsd.org website, I believe, you probably got copies, too. This handout is sort of highlighting the statutes involved that I could pass around for a look at, I don't know if you, I remember you guys had one, but I wanted to have this to pass around for everybody to look at, these are lawsuit statutes involved that I can, okay, I said that. And then, we had the Minnesota Education Equity Partnership's presentation by Dr. Rose Chu. She presented a briefing update on teaching MN 2020 campaign. She provided context on teacher racial diversity. She highlighted what she calls tangible tools and processes that all can utilize collaboratively to support a vision to increase and retain teachers of color and American Indian teachers. You probably received a copy of that, too, but I strongly believe that, as a board, we should consider maybe taking part in this, and maybe incorporate some of this stuff that she presented into our strategic plan, and maybe talk, I mean, just talk about it at the retreat a little bit, because I found her very interesting and very intriguing.
Her presentation's also on?
Yes, yes, yep. That's what I got.
Okay, good. May?
The last meeting was held on August 20th, and some of the highlights include some fall events that are coming up. First of all, MAFE will be having a homecoming float on Friday, September 28th, on the morning of October 24th, at 7:00 a.m., 7:30 a.m. to 9:00. MAFE is hosting a breakfast at the high school, and they're inviting people to come and have a breakfast, and then tour around and see how some of the funds are being spent in the high school, and so, I'm sure they'd love to have as many board members as possible.
What's due to that?
October 24th, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. And then there...
Can you mail, send fellow board with that information?
Sure, sure. And then there will be tours after, so you can see, so. Then, there's also, I mean, I've mentioned this before, November 9th is the 30th anniversary party for MAFE, and there are still tickets available at mafegives.org, $30 a ticket, and Louis Groove, the local band by Madam Edi, students' parents, will be performing at...
Mostly parents, actually, and they play...
Madam Edi students' parents.
Yeah, they play rock and roll covers, like Rolling Stones, AC/DC, and I've Been Promised, Joe Walsh, Rocky Mountain Way, they said they'd play that.
At Delwood, so, buy your tickets. Oh, and if you have seen this, the Wildwood Artist Series, the first performance will be on September 29th. Gustafer Yellowgold, I had to get that out, because I couldn't remember what the name was.
I was told that's a very family-friendly group, so that if you have smaller kids and want a taste of the Wildwood Artist Series, this is the time, the place, the concert to go to.
MSBA?
MSBA.
So, in your MSBA journals, you probably got this week, there was an article about MSBA moving towards using more webinars for professional development. I've signed up and done a couple of those webinars, they're worthwhile, they're quicker, shorter, timely information, and if you sign up and can't attend, then you have access to the recording later, and so, if you see a webinar that's interesting, still sign up, even if you can't actually be there during that time, because then you'll have access to the recording to watch it later. So those are good to do. I have access, I know, to tier licensure one, and to the Janus decision information, I can share those with you if you're interested. On the 14th of this week, at 1:30, Kevin, Mike, and Julie and I are going to meet to talk about resolutions, that's tomorrow. So if you've got ideas for MSBA resolutions, please contact one of us. Those resolutions will be due on the 28th, and so we'll bring them to the full board for discussion and approval at the study session the night before. The conference presentations are due on the 21st, so I know Laura sent out a nice email asking us to sponsor those, I know I'll be working with the high school, but there were two other presentations, so if you haven't responded to Laura yet, please do that. So there's three others? Okay, so there's four total.
We can talk about that after the meeting, maybe, just to see who's interested.
Right, exactly. But those are coming due pretty quickly here. Also, on the 28th, will be the first Metro Area Coffee and Conversations, it'll be held at Mounds View. I know Julie and I attended one last year, or maybe two. They're worth going to, they're good conversations. Sorry, Luke, you'll be in class, but they're worth going to, if you're available. Also, remember, January 17th and 18th will be the leadership conference, I do know student reps do go to that conference, and so if that's something you're interested in, you should start looking into those dates, and letting your teachers know, and we can talk about that. So, that's it.
And there is a summary report of the 916 one. Are there any secondary reports anybody wants to talk about? Epic Community Education, Professor.
So, when I want to start off, the fall 2018 Scoop magazine, always looks so good, and it should be in adult and senior mailboxes this week. Registrations are rolling in for the fall 2018 community ed offerings, and that's aimed at residents of all ages, and many programs are already full, so, one being the Middle School Cross Country with over 70 runners, and the adult history classes filled up, so they added two more. Also, wanted to let you know about MAC, that's the Madam Edi Adventure Club, that's the aftercare and before-school care. That is serving 274 children this year, with enrollment capped at 90 children per site, so that means it's full at Wildwood before and after school. And also, just want to mention the community lunch that was added for September, and that they were hoping for 40 attendees, they had over 72 community members, so it was a big hit. So, lots of good things happening, and just want to recognize Dr. Weyland, she's always doing a fantastic job with the programming here.
How did you accommodate 70 when you planned for 40?
Well, they have to register, so we were hoping for 40.
Oh, so you knew 70 were coming?
Yeah.
Wow, that's phenomenal.
Yeah.
That's phenomenal.
More of a comment than a question, but on community ed, and there is a great program coming through, and Kathy, keep me honest on the dates here, but, actually, I don't know the dates, but there is a great, a really great community conversation that is going to be happening this fall, and in the winter and in spring, it's community conversations that we're doing collaboratively with White Bear Lake Schools, and all of the local jurisdictions, the township, cities around White Bear Lake, to talk about our common experience, and in this case, our common experience is White Bear Lake. And it's first, kind of our first try at this, I know Barb was there at the meeting yesterday, and there's, I think, a fair amount of excitement, but there are three of them, and the first one starts this area prior 1850, which of course would focus on indigenous peoples, and on 1850 to 1950, which would focus on the immigration of various groups, and then 1950 and beyond, talking about kind of more current, and then kind of looking towards the future. But ours is going to be, they're going, so they're going to have evening conversations in White Bear, the conversations in Madam Edi will be during the day, and it will follow the traditional community ed session, it'll be that same kind of model, where we'll have some guest speakers come and talk about the various issues in this, in this community conversation. So, Kathy, might you happen to have the dates? Do you have the dates?
So, it's Wednesday, November 14th, in the evening at White Bear, and Tuesday, December 4th, in Madam Edi, and then it'll continue through January and February, and then the last ones will be in April, and they are listed here in your Scoop.
So, that's from the middle?
Yeah, this one's directed for seniors, but it's probably also included, and it's the one for all ages.
What is a senior considered?
Senior's an adult.
Senior's an adult.
Okay.
You're an adult.
Thanks.
I'm a senior.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I missed the PTO meeting this morning, because I got caught up at work. Did you go to that?
Did.
How did, how, could you give me a little update, or us?
Sure, I could give a little update. So, and Bill was there, and Alice as well. We, so, I got to meet everyone, that was part of it, and then we also gave an informational presentation about the levy, and I don't have the agenda in front of me in terms of the business that they covered, but I know they were looking for volunteers for various programs, and there are quite a few programs that the PTO runs, I was really impressed. So, so there was a lot of, I don't know the level of detail you'd like, but there was a lot of organizing the various volunteer activities, and talking about their fundraising as well, so.
Lot of people?
Oh, yeah, how many would you say were there at that?
Cool.
30?
30 or 40, yep.
Always a good group.
It wasn't 72, it wasn't 72.
Yes, it was, and there were, there were people who have been there for quite some
time, and some new, some new faces as well, so.
It's a good group.
Yes.
Very good. And do you have a superintendent report?
I do, I have a few things. So, I would like to first start by welcoming Luke. I'm excited, I'm excited you're here, and I'm excited that we have a student voice here at the table. It'll be exciting both for you to share what's going on around the district, because I know you told me that's going to be something that you're, more to come, I know you've told me this is just the start, but also, I hope you feel, I hope you feel free to give us your perspective on other items as well, and not, don't feel like you just have to participate only in that way, I hope. It'll be great to hear what it is that, how you see things as well, so, welcome, and I'm glad you're here. I did want to mention a few, over the summer and early in the school year, we, there were a number of teachers that we will get a chance to recognize later, but we have a number of events this evening, and so they're not able to be here. But a couple of things, this, so first of all, this summer, Beth Erlinborn, our library media specialist at OH Anderson, was selected to do a poster presentation at the National, the National Society for Technology and Education Conference this summer, or the international, sorry, International Society for Technology and Education, we call it ISTI. And so, that is, it's a conference that has 20,000 educators from around the world coming together to share ideas and learn from each other, see what's trending in education. So it's really quite the honor that she was selected to present. We also all heard from Myklin Newman, our kindergarten teacher at Wildwood Elementary, who is our Madam Edi Teacher of the Year, so we'll be seeing her at our, at our next meeting. We had Trish Haug, Haug is how I say her last name, I believe, second grade teacher at Wildwood Elementary, who was, is a Minnesota finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Program. So, another huge honor. And then, I learned yesterday that Dr. Lucy Payne was appointed by Governor Dayton to Minnesota's Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board, and she'll be a member from September 12th, and she'll, her term will expire January 1st, 2022, so that is a...
Way to go, Dave.
Good job! Hey!
Congratulations. So that's, so we learned that yesterday, so that's a, that's a huge honor. And it just so happened, and so, as we're talking about government, governor appointments, I also learned upon my arrival that Virginia Mancini, a middle school English teacher, was appointed by Governor Dayton to the Board of School Administrators. So I just think this is kind of a big deal, that we have two appointments by the governor right here in Madam Edi. So most recently, though, Dr. Lucy Payne, so, so I thought that was something worth noting.
Julie, glad to know, though, our meetings for Pelsby, I have one tomorrow morning, it starts at 9:00 and goes to at least 1:00 o'clock, so they don't leave in the shorter meeting times like you do, so.
Oh, I'd have to have a stroller for that.
Finally, I just did want to, I was going to mention the community, the community luncheon, which was fabulous, I had a great time, I met Howard Markey, is that his last name? Who is a former OH lead custodian, am I getting that right? I think so, and it was very fun to meet him, and then after, he realized there are all sorts of new people here, he did a little tour of the office, and stopped in, and visited every, every office to see if it was still the same person sitting in that chair, so he got to meet Alice and Tony, and so, so that was pretty fun. But there were quite a few people to meet, and I had, I had a great time there. Finally, I did want to mention that on Friday, October 26th, that Century College, we are partnering with, well, Century, 916, White Bear Lake Area Schools, Rasmussen College, on a career exploration, career exploration and job fair, and I know last time, in the White Bear area, Chamber of Commerce is, is leading this charge, and I know they were looking for more businesses, so it's Health and Human Services is the focus, and so if you know of anyone who might be interested in, in helping, or has a business that could, could participate, it's both to, to talk to students who are pursuing, it's our high school students who are looking at post-secondary opportunities, and then it'll also be Century College students who are looking for jobs as well, careers in, in Health and Human Services. So I did want to put that out there, as I know they're still looking for, looking for some businesses to join them. And Kevin has been part of that as well, so I don't know, I didn't tell you I was going to mention it, but if you have anything else to fill in...
Stacy's also been a part of that through the Minnesota Chamber, but again, it's just to try to give connections for our students for jobs and opportunities they just might not know are out there, and we have, on the employer side, they are desperate for good people to work in their businesses, so this is a great way of connecting. I don't know, Stacy, if you had any?
It's just, right, and it's, it's really to open the eyes of those thinking about their future, as to what are the in-demand jobs, and what pathway do you need to take to get to that job, and so hopefully, it'll be, and really, the ultimate goal is that these young people will find careers that are fulfilling for them, and also help our economy by filling the jobs that are really needed to be, needing to be filled.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to, can I just, not related to, that election guide I mentioned earlier, that I brought the wrong thing in, that is on the website at amsd.org, in PDF form, so you can look at it as well, just so you know.